Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are now live on YouTube.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 16th Revere School Committee Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. We'll call the members.
This is Bronston Rizzo.
Yeah.
Mr. Dambrosio.
Here.
Mr. Franti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Oreo.
Here. The next portion of our meeting is a public speak. I know that there are a number of participants. I believe we have eighty-one in attendance right now. A couple of notes that I'll make before we jump into public participation. Number one is that the school committee does have a fifteen-minute limit on the amount of public comment period. We will kind of address and assess the number of people that we get through, but I'm assuming that we'll have a lot. We do limit the remarks that people make to three minutes, so if you can please keep your message concise, we greatly appreciate that. And then the last thing I'll say is that it's come to my attention that there may be a number of student voices that want to be heard. So what I would request is that if you are an adult, please wait your turn, and let's allow some of our student voices to be heard. We're going to ask any student that may want to make a comment to please raise their hand. And, Dr. Kelly, you will take it from there and start adding people in. But again, I would really encourage, if there are any students that would like to say something, raise your hand. We'd like to hear from you first this evening.
And just to help with that, Mr. Mayor, if we could ask the adults to lower their hand until after we hear from the kids, that will be easier for us to identify the students to speak. Okay, so we're going to start. Our first speaker will be Dylan Day. And I am promoting Dylan to a panelist because he doesn't have the ability to speak otherwise.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Dylan Day, and I'm a resident of Revere and also a student at Revere High School. And I just want to speak from a student's perspective, all of you, on what it's really like being a student in today. So one thing that I've noticed is that my classes now are a lot different than when I was at Revere High. And it's really unfortunate because, I mean, I'm going to be honest, the classes aren't challenging. They're just not as hard. The work is a lot less. The work is a lot easier. And I feel like I'm being deprived of a proper, like, system. My classes aren't, they just aren't challenging. I mean, there's been times where I've fallen asleep during class. I mean, I'm going to be honest here. I've fallen asleep, and I haven't missed anything. I woke up and nothing was, nothing's changed. And I feel like it's been like that since March. Another point I want to bring up is the lack of teacher and student relationships with online learning. I mean, there was a class that I had where the whole semester, only three students spoke the whole semester. So imagine a class with thirty-something plus kids, and the teacher only heard three different voices from September to January. So I feel like with online learning, we're being deprived of the in-person, like, relationships that we have. Like, there are teachers that I could go to if I need something, and that's just not there anymore. It's hard to reach people through email. It's hard to show emotion through email. And not even just between teachers and students, but students and students. There are kids that I met in my junior year classes that I'm friends with to this day, based off the fact that we sat next to each other, and we could communicate and build a bond with each other. And students today are just lacking that. And I can only think of freshmen. I feel so bad for the freshmen because they came into a new school, and they just were not able to build relationships with new kids. I mean, if you come from Garfield, you want to meet kids from the RMA or the SBA and become friends with them, but these kids just haven't had the opportunity to do that. And finally, one thing I want to bring up is, I mean, growing up in the Revere School System, everyone told you, oh, wait till you get high school. High school's the best four years of your life. High school's this. Wait till your prom. Wait till graduation. Some of us have had none of that. I have not gone to a prom. And it's going to be, we're in the second half of my senior year, and there's nothing to look forward to when I wake up in the morning for school. There's nothing, there's nothing to get excited about. And I've only been in the building for two and a half years, and it feels like I'm missing the best year and a half of high school. And every adult in the Revere Public School System always told me, wait till high school. Wait till high school. You're going to have so much.
Dylan, I think we lost your audio. Can you hear me, Dylan?
He just muted himself. Dylan, you muted yourself. You...
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that was it. I didn't know I had to tell you. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you, Dylan.
Okay. Next, we have Mark Galvez. Mark, you should be able to talk now.
Can people hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear you?
All right, perfect. So I can't really find out how to... Get my screen, but it's okay. So, hi, my name is Mark Galvez. I'm a resident of Revere. I'm a senior. All right, Jess, I've been part of Revere Public School System my whole life, much since kindergarten. Obviously, why I'm here today is to advocate for why I think students need to be back. Oh, there we go. All right. All right. Hi, I'll start over. This is Mark Galvez. I'm a resident. I'm a senior at RHS. I've been a part of the Revere Public School Systems my whole life. And obviously, why I'm here today is to advocate for why I think students should be back in the building in some way, shape, or form. And the most important point that I want to present today is mental health. The way I see it is that you can't really tell how bad it is until you've been in those shoes. So as of right now, I have COVID. I tested positive a week ago, and I've been in self-isolation for the last six or seven days. And I have no symptoms, so I'm free to go after ten days per the MA COVID team. And the way I see it, the past few days, I've caught myself just zoning out, and it's just me, I have nothing but time. And it's just me and my thoughts, and my thoughts racing for hours. And then it came to mind, I was like, wow, like, this is really what some people go through on a daily basis. This is what people go through in their everyday lives. And that's when I started to think about how much better it would be if, like I said, in some way, shape, or form, students were back in the building, having these social interactions with people that could have helped them, or it's just better to get into a habit, waking up in the morning, having to get ready, having to go to school, instead of taking first, second, third, and fourth period from the spot you woke up in, in the morning. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Next up is Ryan Razzi.
Hi, my name is Ryan Razzi. I'm a resident of Revere. I'm a senior RHS and captain of the track team. So I'm here to talk about mostly about sports. So personally, I plan on attending BU in fall, and I'm going to try to walk onto the track team. And though with the whole COVID situation, it's been tough when it comes to like the recruiting process for me. Over the month of January, me and about three other guys on the track team spent around $200 each to compete in a call of an hour way, just to be able to have that opportunity in hopes of competing at the next level. And it just sucks knowing that the aspect, that, like, aspect is out of our control because no matter how much, like, work we put in, without RHS being in some sort of hybrid model and some sort of kids being in the building for learning, all of our hard work is going to waste. If we can't compete in our respective sports, and I know that's the thing for a lot of people that are with me, like seniors on this, in a lot of ways, sports are way out for some kids. And a lot of people I know personally only show up to school on the everyday basis to be able to compete in sports, and it's creating like this awful mindset where if the kids aren't able to play and take part in what they enjoy, they're starting to fail classes. And it sucks because I saw firsthand how sports changed people's attitudes toward school. One of my teammates on the track team that was with me during that month of January was failing all their classes in December, like, before they started doing this. And as we started passing and stuff, I started getting on them, like, as a captain, like, I tried getting them to start doing stuff in school. And I saw, like, their grades went up, and they started passing, they ended the semester passing all their classes because of that, like, routine, they started building up, going to practices, going to these meets, having that, like, willingness to want to go and be better at the next level. And that's a lot of kids in our city. And it just sucks knowing that, like, I can drive fifteen minutes away to another city and know those kids that go to that high school have those opportunities and are able to compete in their respective sports. And overall, I truly think sports are a positive impact for the athletes, and just in general, the morale, like, the community in general. As a football player as well, I saw that, as, like, our football team was doing good last year, I saw the community, like, start to, like, rise and, like, help each other out. And it was just, like, walking down Broadway, you see that people were, like, actually happy, and, like, the morale was up. And I think in a time like this, everyone just needs that type of morale booster in their lives. And I think the first step to that is getting some sort of group of kids back in the school, where that will allow another group of kids to be able to be happy and have that morale booster in their lives, and be able to compete in their sports, be able to want to be better in themselves, and, like, better themselves individually. And that'll just, like, be a good thing for the community in general. And I think that's why, this should be a big reason to want to go back in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And now, that's the last student in the participant group with a hand up. So I'm going to go to Ryan Justett, our student member, who I know is going to speak on behalf of a few kids.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, so first, I would just, one of the first statements I'm going to read off is from John Tran. He's a senior at RHS. He's a fellow football captain of mine. And he says, "With college in my mind, I knew that this semester would have been a strong push. I had to focus extra hard on my academics and also do my college applications. However, now with my eight-year-old brother at home with me too, it would be much more difficult. My dad was always at work, so I am the sole responsibility at the house during the school day. I first felt the frustration when I had to take a test in one of my AP courses. My little brother ran into the room because his computer had issues, and I was not able to connect him to his class. I panicked because my test was timed, but I also just couldn't let my little brother miss the class. Incidents just like this happen much more often, and it reached points where I broke down because I was so frustrated. Online school was already enough for me to be angered, but now I had to worry about my little brother as well. It finally reached a point where I knew online school wasn't working for my brother. His teacher contacted me and said he had not done any of his work outside of school since the beginning of the year. It struck me because I had already had enough time with him at home, and he might not even have to stay back. It took a while for me to finally understand his opportunities and websites for doing work so that he could do it himself. I don't know how they expected him to use the computer while, when there were things I didn't even know how to do in my high school classes. However, education would not only be the problem. I saw a decrease in my brother's physical health because our school schedules are different. Lunch was a big issue every day. I couldn't leave to get school lunches for him. And he was also just not able to eat the food I made. This would lead him to just snacking around, microwaving food, and distracting me from my Zoom classes while he had lunch. He would be sitting in one spot all day and eating unhealthy diets. Even when this diet, though, I believe that some moving around physical activity would help. However, that also affected him by being at home. At the Whalen, there would be gym class every day. However, on Zoom schedule, he only has gym once a week, and it's also a very limited gym class and does not compare at all to the gym at school. I believe that the sake of my brother being at school is the best option for him. Although he's making his way through online school, I believe that is an anchor that is holding him down. He always longed to see his friends and go back to school where things are always different and better for him. I hope that he's able to go back to school for the better of his education and for his health." And then I have just one more statement from the secretary of the senior class, Minna Sheik. And she said, "My name is Minna Sheik, and I currently have a senior at Revere High School. Today, I'm not writing to as a secretary of the senior class, or a member of the student senate, or the captain of the speech and debate team, but I'm stepping out of all my roles and writing to as simply concerned soon elevating the voices of my peers. I love to talk, and as I continue to conduct dialogue with my classmates and friends, I see both sides of the reopening story. On one hand, I talk to students who are losing all motivation. Students like myself, who normally thrive in academic situations, are now struggling to show up to classes. In the past semester, I told over fifteen absences because my mental health did not allow me to show up to my classes, and quite blatantly, I saw no point of showing up. On the other hand, I talk to students who have lost loved ones on the pandemic and are afraid of leaving their homes. I want to preface my remarks by saying that I see both sides of the story, and as someone who has watched almost every school committee and city council meeting, I know that everyone has the same goal of pushing for the safe return of students in the building, and I truly do applaud those efforts. However, as every debate competition or Mollie conferences taught me, if you want people to listen, you have to make them feel heard. And the matter of the fact is that regardless of where students may stand on the reopening, we don't feel like we have a seat at the decision-making table. Having personal relations with the number of school committee members, I personally know that every member has values, values student voice, and that is why I am urging you to create a seat for us at your table. I am pushing for the creation of a student-based forum to conduct and dialogue, as I do acknowledge, the school committee has limits on its public speaking and other things on the agenda. And I hear the stories and opinions of all students. As history has taught us, and time again, is through stories and shared experiences that we solve some of our most pressing issues. Thank you for listening to my statement, and thank you for all the work you do. I look forward to working with you to facilitate dialogue. And that is all I have for students who could not make it to the meeting tonight, but wanted to share their statement. So, thank you."
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mr. Mayor, there are seven additional attendees with hands up at this time, so I can just take them one at a time. The first one is Jean LaRosa.
And as folks are brought into the room and can make public comment, I would ask that they provide their name and address for the record.
Oh, hi. I'm sorry. I'm part of Al Maguero's ELL department. So my apologies. I'm happy to be here, though.
I'm going to bring you back in a few minutes, Jeannie, okay? Let me see. Now I'm going to figure out how to get you back. Okay. Next is Darlene. Darlene, you can unmute.
Okay. Hi, the reason I'm calling is...
I'm sorry, Darlene, can you just give us your name?
Oh, my name is Darlene Jones. I'm sorry. My name is Darlene Jones. I live at AD Jones Road, Revere, Massachusetts. And I have a few questions. One is I'm concerned about the implications when the schools open, what it would have on seniors, but not only seniors, all people, especially with comorbidities. If they open the school because the B-117 they're talking about might become the dominant strain, and they're talking about that might start happening in March. So that's a concern of mine. Also, and I don't know, we're not sure how well the vaccines are going to be working with that particular strain. Also, I'm concerned about the seniors, because many seniors live with their grandchildren. Many of them are their guardians. And I'm concerned on how these, I know a few myself, that are guardians of their grandchildren, and some of them have three and four grandchildren that their guardians are. And I'm concerned about how they're going to, you know, it's going to react to them, especially being seniors and having comorbidities, but yet not being seventy-five yet, so they can't get the shots at this time.
Thank you, Darlene.
Sorry, Mr. Patczynski and I are having some technical difficulties as I'm trying to run this meeting. So that's why I keep showing, closing my camera as we try to work that out. All right. Next up is Mr. Joseph Ciccarello.
Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Ciccarello. I've been teaching in Revere for, I think, twenty-four years now. I teach mainly juniors and seniors. I coach hockey and softball. I taught every single one of those kids that have spoken tonight and even read from the letters, and I hear their frustration every single day in my classroom. Dylan, I'm going to get you tomorrow saying that you sleep in my class. I'm going to make sure you never sleep in my class. I think that I come to you for two-pronged, as a teacher and as a coach. I've always said that I'm a teacher-coach because teaching comes before coaching, just like they're student-athletes. They need to be students well before they're athletes. I believe wholeheartedly that these kids, the kids that need to come back, I know there's a lot of concern about, a lot of kids don't want comorbidities, they're living with elderly. I think that I would be pushing for the kids that want to come back and are willing to, as well as the teachers. That has to be first and foremost. But as I go about my every single day trying to find out some answers and push as many people as I could, I'm realizing that there's just a lot of hurdles with the schools. However, what is a lot easier to get this ball rolling of getting back to normalcy is athletics. It just seems like the athletics is the less, way less hurdles for the first group. Now, I never would want to say, let the athletes stop playing and then bring kids back in the building. I think many of you who know me out there would say, kids need to get back into this building, at least in some groups, whether that, whatever that small subgroup would be, they need to come back first. But having said that, given the time constraints where the winter sports start now, I had a hockey practice just now with Malden, Revere, and Maton as a co-op hockey program, and the Revere teacher was on the Revere ice with no Revere kids. And it was definitely, certainly, a little strange. So I think that the academic piece right now, to get them in the building and that ball rolling, as everybody knows them for that first, I just think that those hurdles are time-consuming to jump over, whereas athletics have been going on all throughout this whole pandemic. So those hurdles are way less. We just came back from hockey practice. The rink was clearly marked. Everybody had bided by all of the protocols. Every single player had masks on, coaches had masks on. We walked in, we practiced, and we left. I'm sure basketball and any other winter sport would say the same thing because the, and our whole league is already starting, but Revere. I never would ask anybody to let the athletes jump over any sort of other subgroup. But given the time constraint of the winter sports already starting, and given the situation of the hurdles academically, to get that group to start, I'm just asking the committee and everybody involved to at least let the athletes be the first to start. In this unusual times, let that ball roll first because that hurdle is so much easier to jump over than the other subgroups. Thank you.
Joe, I just want to clarify a couple of things that you said. All of the teams in the GBL are not practicing yet, correct?
So it is my understanding that they could start now. I haven't heard, I think Everett is starting, Medford, Malden, well, of course, we're with Malden, and I think Somerville just said yes, and Lynn voted, and I'm not quite sure with their, the last two was Lynn and Everett. I mean, Lynn and Somerville. I think the...
And Chelsea's not back yet either, and Lynn's not back yet either. I just want to be clear because there's a lot of people saying, everybody is back but us. And I just want to make sure we're being factual with what we say.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Next is Ralph DeChico.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly, for Ralph DeChico, Forty-Nine Washington Street, also a member of the Commission of Disabilities. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, for stating that about the other cities that are not athletes playing. That was very, very informative. To me, education is number one. That should be first and foremost, never mind the athletics. I'm going to defer this conversation because I have other questions that I'm trying to just ask about. I'm just trying to see if there's any updates on the ASOST competitive grant opportunities that the state had put out a couple of weeks ago. Also, there was some other grant opportunities that were just announced today that I wanted to see if the city of Revere has any information on, and if they're also going to be trying to get the funding on it. There's a pre-K to grade-three remote learning partnership grant that's not only going to be for now, but it's also going to be extended through the summer and to the beginning of last year. So hopefully, I know there's no comment that's going to come now, but hopefully, there'll be some information that could come out on emails about that. But there are a lot of grant opportunities for schools that are in hybrid or remote learning as of January nineteenth for pre-K to grade three, along with this financial literacy and planning implementation grants that have been just released. This is where the conversations should be going. I know people are worried about getting the kids in school, but we have to play with the cards that we are dealt right now. We have to get the resources that are out there that we can use, and we have to be able to get the resources and go with the remote learning that we have right now, and get all the funding that we can to play with the cards that we're using right now. I know everybody wants to go back into school, but there are many hurdles. There are many unanswered questions. So we need to just go with what we have right now and get the funding and work on what we have right now. And I know we're in almost at the middle of February now, and there's families with learning disabilities, ELL. These grants will go a long way in helping get the resources for those families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Next is Kristen Martin.
Hi, all. Thanks so much. Just a few quick things to say. Oh, my address is 111 Utah Street. I'm in East Boston, and I'm a ESL teacher at Garfield Middle. So as a Revere educator with a lot at stake in the ongoing reopening discussions and a lot to lose in the case of a mishandled reopening, I have been tuning in week after week to these meetings and these ongoing discussions by school committee members and other school officials. I did tune in on January nineteenth a few weeks ago when school committee members discussed a motion to encourage the reopening of schools on March first. This date was kind of thrown about casually as an optimistic goal to give people hope. And during the discussion, one committee member actually referred to March first as an impossible date. Another member commented, March first, March fifteenth, March thirtieth, it's an arbitrary date. That same member said he would shoot for March thirty-first, subject to, obviously, the vaccine being available. And it seemed at the time that many of you agree that vaccinations, public health metrics, and a robust, expanded, and agreed-upon reopening plan were of utmost importance. So you can probably imagine my surprise when, a mere three weeks later, when I learned that the district came into negotiations with a really rigid expectation of students in our buildings on March first, the supposedly impossible date. So I'm here to ask you what exactly has changed. Because to my knowledge, our vaccinations have been delayed. Revere still has very troublesome COVID metrics, and we are still learning about the adverse effects of COVID on our children. And I would refer you to the front page of the New York Times this morning. More than anything, teachers want to be with our students, and we are working as hard as we can, not only inside the classroom, to plan engaging and effective lessons, but also outside the classroom. And I can speak for many members when I speak of the countless calls... And I can speak for many members when I speak of the countless calls to Governor Baker's office, petitions demanding the vaccine, and fighting for the MTA's new pilot vaccine program. So basically, what we are asking for is to return when it is safe. We are asking to return when we have a vaccine available to us. And we are asking for some transparency, honesty, and consistency from our school officials. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kristin. Next is Patrick Keefe, City Councilor.
Hi, good afternoon, or good evening. Thanks for having me. I know that there's already been a lot said, and I've been pretty vocal on the subject. But I just wanted to kind of clear up some of the record in regards to my comments or my feelings and, you know, where I stand, and also, you know, I guess, you know, where maybe some of the people that I represent stand. In no way, shape, or form has any of this advocacy to reopen schools for the students should be conveyed towards an anti-teacher movement. If anything, I think that the length of this negotiation has, in fact, and some of the media attention, and every paper you read, there's a different article. There's definitely been some animosity towards teachers, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear that that should not be warranted, and it's not something that anyone, that I talk with support. I think the teachers have worked unbelievably hard over this last 11 months, more than anything they could ever expect or be prepared to do. So I really appreciate what they've done. But again, the students have also been in that same predicament. And the unfortunate side is, as we've seen tonight, even with some of the four brightest students you have at the school, they're talking about having more of a voice. So these are seniors that are going to schools like Harvard, Clemson, Boston University, and the likes. And they're talking about having a voice. I'm not quite sure that the eight-year-old or the seven-year-old that goes to the elementary school has much of a voice. So we, the parents, have to be there to speak for them. Certainly Ryan Doucette and Shuck can speak for themselves, and I wouldn't even attempt to. Or Dylan Day or John Tran. But the issue that I see most is the, there's no sensibility in the fact that we have eight schools, and we talked about a little, some finances, we talked just a few minutes ago about funding and grants. Revere Public Schools are unbelievably well-funded. I mean, granted, we could always afford more, and if there's grant money available, we should certainly take advantage of it. But compared to schools one mile north and one mile south of us that have much less funding, they're either in-person, or they received some form of hybrid. And they, of course, and again, this is not about sports. I really could care less if we have one sport. Certainly, I would like it, but they're playing athletics. So again, you have Revere students that are looking one mile north and one mile south of us, Winthrop and Saugus, much less well-funded schools, and they're able to achieve these metrics. Granted, we talk about COVID and barriers, and I know that Revere has seen its high share of the COVID numbers. But we've also been very, we've been very accepting to our neighbors and having multiple test sites. And it's a well-known fact that, of course, we're going to have higher metrics when we're having the higher testing. But going back to, how can we not, how can we turn our backs on the highest-need learners? And we talk about ELL, special needs, and high-risk students. Probably a very small population, maybe 5% to 8% of our student base. I don't understand why we can't have sensibility to allow just that population in our schools. I'm not advocating for my child. My daughter's a senior in high school. She's receiving college applications. She can, I leave her home all day with my son. They take care of their own business. Are they doing great? No. Have they suffered emotionally? Yes, a little. Have they suffered physically? Yes, a little. But I'm not concerned with them. I don't care if they go back to school this year. But these young kids that need more attention, these kids that don't have someone at home to take care of them, John Tran's little brother, they need to be in a school. And how can we not do that in these eight unbelievable schools that are well-funded? Not separate them well enough, have educators that we know will volunteer to do it, because there's a percentage of educators that will do it and take that risk, allow them in our building. These buildings are the taxpayers of Revere's buildings. They're run by you, Dr. Kelly, and the mayor, and the student schools committee. These are your buildings. These are our buildings. No union should be able to tell us who can go into those schools. Those are up to you. So ultimately, the buck stops with the school committee, the superintendent, and the mayor. And I suggest that you open the schools immediately to the high-risk population. Again, I'm not talking about Dylan Day, I'm not talking about Adriana Keefe. I'm not talking about my children. I'm not talking about the kids that probably have a little bit more. But Revere is a suburban, an urban community with a heavily minority population that doesn't have a ton of money. So it's a socioeconomic issue that we're allowing to continue to happen. And you're going to continue to put those students in further risk. And they're going to fall further and further behind the students of more wealth and that are whiter. And it's as simple as that. And the school, and these teachers, and everyone marched, and we talked about it. We were supportive of this movement throughout the summer. And we turn our back on those students. We turn our back on that demographic of the city again. And that, to me, is the most disgraceful. So I would hope that you, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Kelly, and you know how much I respect what you do, and you, Mr. Mayor Orego, and you, the school committee, do what you can to our buildings and let the kids back in, the smallest population that you can. And start, start with five students if you have to. But no one should be able to tell you that you can't allow them in. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just in the interest of time, there are three more people with hands up, and we're at 6:45 almost. So I'm going to suggest that we cut the list off after these last three.
Well, we'll cut it off at the, I think the last name I see is Jennifer Jones.
Yep, okay. So the next one is Emily Delary.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, excellent. My name is Emily Delary. I live on Bartholomew Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. But I lived in Revere for 30 years of my life, so Revere holds a very special place in my heart. I am a middle-school intensive special-needs teacher in Revere. And I have to say that hearing the the comment about starting that March 1st start date was very disturbing to me, considering that we are on February vacation right now. And I'm sure that most teachers don't want to be prepping for their classroom to be open on March 1st. So that would only kind of give us a week to really prepare for whoever is deemed necessary to come back into the school. With that being said, being an intensive special-needs teacher, my classroom looks, and I'm speaking kind of selfishly from the point of view of intensive special-needs teacher, which there aren't a lot of us in Revere, but there are some of us. And our classrooms look a lot different than a general ed classroom or an inclusion classroom, or even some of the SLG classrooms. We focus on things such as ADLs, Activities of Daily Living. We do a lot of personal care, which is, i.e. toileting, teaching students how to wipe noses, teaching them how to wash their hands, brushing their teeth. These are the main aspects of a lot of their IEPs. And we also do a lot of hand-over-hand assistance, and we're very, very close to our students. Very, very close contact at some points. And I wonder, you know, what would my classroom and the other classrooms like mine actually look like? Because what we're talking about, my students are the highest-need students in Revere as of right now. And I am all for getting them back into the classrooms, I really am. But there doesn't seem to be a plan in place that I have heard personally. So if there is a plan, then I apologize. But if there isn't, then what would my room look like? What would I actually be doing? Would I be standing at the front?
Emily, I can have your principal reach out to you on that. All of that is communicated with teachers. But just in the interest of time, you've been speaking for three minutes already. So I just wanted to
Okay.
highlight that. Is there anything else that you want to tell the committee?
Yes, one more thing would be about the vaccine. I, myself, am pregnant, and I would hate, my OB would tell me that I would be having a tougher recovery time with the vaccine, which I plan on getting. And for all other educators, would that be something that would affect our sick days if we would have to take time off because of the vaccine that we would be getting? And that's about it, so thank you.
I'll ask Dr. Galucci to reach out to you about your personal medical concerns and sick time.
All right.
Thank you. Next is Gina Garrow.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Gina.
Hi, hi, everybody. I will be quick, because I know we're short on time, and I just, oh, 165 Hudson Street, Somerville. Thanks. I really just wanted to address the, and I don't know if the school committee is going to talk about this, the pilot program that I think Kristin alluded to. So the Mass Teachers Association has been working really hard with the Firefighters Union and Mascon, the Medical Supply Company, to get started this pilot vaccine program for focusing on not just teachers, but public school employees. So this would cover, you know, cafeteria workers, paraprofessionals. And Revere is one of the targeted communities out of the 20 pilot communities. So it's really exciting for us. And I just think that knowing how important it is, and has been mentioned here by others about, you know, vaccinating the adults who are going to be working in the schools. It's very, this is an opportunity for the teachers' union, the community, the school committees, superintendents to work together to push our officials to really make something like this vaccination program happen. Because the legwork has been done, it's ready to go. We just need the governor to really okay this. And Representative Mariano, for example, has said how educators are a priority. And so I think we could really work together to get, to put the pressure where it needs to be put so that we can vaccinate the public school employees and move towards, you know, the safe return to in-person learning. Thanks.
Thanks, Gina. And last, there's two more people who put their hands up. But, Mr. Mayor, as you indicated, we've got to call time at some point. So the last person will be Jennifer Jones.
Hi. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Jen.
You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, I was just going to first start off by saying to Mr. Keefe that the teachers are the union. So I don't know, and he says he didn't want to bash teachers. I kind of just felt the bashing there too, because we all are part of that union. But other than that, I will say this. As a teacher, I'm still confused about the timeline to start school. In the school committee, I was watching on January 19th. It seemed pretty obvious that March 1st was a date that many felt were impossible, were some of the words that were used. And another person said they were just kind of using the wording that March 1st was as wording rather than like a goal to be optimistic. So as a teacher, I'm just sitting here still confused. In order to go forward to the hybrid model, isn't the job now to put measures in place for everyone to be safe in doing so? Why are we putting a date on something? I'm just wondering, shouldn't we rather make sure all safety precautions and CDC guidelines are in place and ready to go? Shouldn't that be our timeline? Rather than?
I'll just briefly answer that. That's all done, Jen. We've met the CDC guidelines and all the others from public health officials. And I know that, however people heard it, that the committee voted at their last meeting to push toward a reopening of schools on March 1st. You know, there was discussion certainly about whether or not that was an appropriate date. In the end, that was the date that they voted.
So I don't understand, I understand that there's a lot of pressure being put on the elected officials for seniors and their sports, and I get it, you know what I mean? But is why, is the sports being tied to school opening? Because I think there's a lot that needs to be done in preparation. And I know that there might be some kind of deadline for the kids to get into sports. And I don't know if that should be tied to what we're trying to do in planning to open safely using guidelines. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. And I want to thank the school committee for the leeway in terms of the amount of the level of participation we've had tonight and the number of people that we've had speak, and the length that they spoke. You know, we, as a chair, I want to give as much leeway, and I know the school committee supports this. This is such an important topic and one that's created a lot of anxiety and a lot of anger in the community. And I think it's really important for us to hear all sides and not cut off or stifle the conversation in any way. So thank you for the, thank you for the leeway in supporting the amount of public participation that we have tonight. I know it's taken a little bit more time than we had anticipated, but I really think it's important for us as a board. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the superintendent's report is a presentation by the Garfield Middle School. And Principal Patczynski is here with us, along with several of his staff members. I'm trying to find the right link here. Steve, can you remind me who I'm bringing up for this presentation?
That is going to be Sean Wersoncroft and Andrea Ashelman, please.
Okay. Okay, they should be here with us.
All right, now are you able to share the screen, Dr. Kelly, and run the slide?
I hope so. I mean, this, your presentation has been giving me trouble like nothing else today.
Okay, well, we're going to do our best. So am I free to go, and I'll start the video?
Well, give me one second, and let me, let me just open up the presentation and get the screen shared. Is that okay?
No, that's fine.
Okay. And I hope I have the right version. I could also make you a co-presenter if you wanted to share your version.
Well, if it's okay, why don't you go with yours? I'm struggling a little bit. No, it's, I'm hesitant to stop my video right now, and I'll explain in a moment. But I'll start now, and I appreciate it. And I hope you guys will apologize for my appearances this evening, having a 40-pound puppy, black ice, a trip to the ER, along with stitches and a mild concussion. I do appreciate you allowing us to present tonight and having the opportunity, because I do think it's a really important presentation to take and to speak. You know, rigor relevance, relationships, of course. I'll say the three R's right now, the fourth, being resilience. Obviously, we all are being resilient right now. And the fifth, I guess, would be remote learning as well, if you want to add another R in there for remote. But, Dr. Kelly?
Signal me when to click, Steve.
Yep, so if we could go to the next slide. I mean, it's really needless to talk about the difficulties and the impact on teaching and learning that's been going on in the world and the nation. But I do appreciate the opportunity to personalize it to Garfield Middle School tonight. You know, certainly, we have all the middle schools and all the schools and students. And we heard this from Dylan, the former GMS students and other people tonight, have much less time and face time with their teachers. You know, that relationships and development. There are fewer course offerings. You know, as an expanded learning time school, we revamped our schedule a year ago to offer our students 40 new classes. We are offering our specials right now of wellness and PE. We have, um, art and, and technology. But again, when we reduce it from 40 classes, and these are the things that excite students, you know, the classes that we had such as yoga and puzzle club and let's get moving. The, that we really miss a lot of that. And again, as we heard from students and parents and even teachers tonight, that engagement is really a difficult thing that, you know, the pandemic has had on, on the impact of teaching and learning. So Dr. Kelly, if we could go to the next slide. And teachers have had the Herculean task of improvising, adapting and overcoming these obstacles. They're developing, they're creating, they're modifying their lessons to make them engaging, applicable and relevant. They're learning new platforms, uh, or maybe not so new. I mean, a year ago, I had no idea what Zoom was. And here we are, or I am anyway, spending such a majority of my time on it. But teachers now are really working and using these platforms such as Perdeck and Screencast and Flipgrid and Jamboard to engage students and provide a variety of experiences. The instructional strategies that worked in the past aren't the same in this remote world. And while they're doing that, they maintain this rigor and these high expectations, especially, you know, as we move into competency-based grading as well as detracking. The, our, our teachers, the expectations that they have for their students, um, as well as the need to reengage and rekindle this desire, um, to learn and be, and to be part of the educational process. So with that being said, um, I am excited and hope that you'll allow me to share some, uh, work that the teachers have been doing is, uh, more importantly, that the, that the students have been doing, um, at the Garfield Middle School. And if we could move to the next slide, please. So, starting with rigor, I share with this exemplar of, of a, um, document-based question, a, a type of essay that, you know, AP students, um, do on, on their exams with the synthesis of materials. That has multi-paragraphs, that has a thesis statement, an introduction, a conclusion, and again, the synthesis of materials. And this is done by an 11-year-old. This is in our sixth grade, um, ancient civilizations class. I believe with, with Ms. Del Greco for this. So again, the, we are holding our students to high expectations, um, even in the, in the remote world and working with them, um, to develop these. And on the next slide, I'll continue on interrelevance. That to make, engage students to make the lessons applicable to their daily lives. That our eighth grade ELA department, after Amanda Gorman read, uh, The Hill We Climb, which cited at the inauguration, made it applicable and relevant to the students with the curriculum that they're reading in civil rights, as well as, uh, applying it to Warriors Don't Cry, the, the, the novel that they're reading. So again, other ways, so we have the rigor, the relevance and making it applicable. And the, the relationship part is really the tricky part. And I think this is where we're also going to run into a little technical difficulties, but we're gonna, we're gonna see how we make out on this next slide. Get hit it again rather than having to. But I, I, I hope we all did have the opportunity to hear this young poet speak. Oh, it looks like, it looks like we may get some work in here. Um, but with, with relationships, the one thing that's really important and so difficult, you know, when we don't have our students with us in the classroom, is the, the atmosphere that our student, I'm sorry, our teachers are creating even in a remote classroom. That where students are willing to take risks, that they're willing to read aloud. Now, this right here is an eighth grade summative assessment on Punnet Squares. And not only did the student, um, develop the Punnet Squares, but he also took on a role play and created a video, um, of him serving as a doctor or acting as a doctor and speaking to his patients. So maybe perhaps, Dr. Kelly, we could watch maybe 45 seconds to a minute of this. If we're lucky, oh, here we are.
This is Dr. Sosa. I am from Garfield Hospital. I suggest you choose a donor number 6641, sir. That is because her DNA is homozygous recessive, which means she has red hair. And since yours is R, R, but one is capitalized, that means, sir, there will be a 50% chance of it, the baby coming out with red hair. 50% of it coming out with black hair. That is if everything goes right in the DNA, as we suggest. But we suggest her because the other, the other egg donors all have 100% chance of coming out with black hair. So it's, I think it's a better choice if you choose one that there's a possibility than one that there isn't. Well, my evidence to that is when I did the research, I checked it three times. And every time DNA came out 50% for each. And I did a Punnet square, which is even easier to identify. So I am certain that there will be a 50% chance of the baby coming out with red hair. Now that is if.
So I think we can have an example there. So thank you. But again, we, we hear a student using academic language and discourse. And on top of that, taking the risk of creating, uh, a video and sharing this with his classmates, with his teacher and putting up. But also to engage students, if we move into the next slide, we'll see a technology class that deals with a cross-curricular, uh, of, of science and pollution. And I wish I could show this a little bit more, but this again is a type of role-playing. Where we have two students who actually created, they took on the role of event planners. So Oriana and Nyla, uh, took on the event. And what they did is they created a webpage. And if you look to the upper right, you can see that they created four different activities. Again, this, this is just a screenshot, so it's, but they did create this in their technology class with Mr. Wolf. This is a seventh grade class, um, in which you can move around and, and see the, uh, learn about the event that they created. I'm more than happy to keep talking about the science in the classes, but at the same time, I would like to, um, have a couple of the teachers who I invited, Ms. Aiselman and Mr. Worsencroft. If we could move on to the next slide, I'm going to pass it over to them and let them explain some of the work that they've been doing and the responses that they've been seeing from their students.
Hello, everyone. I'm Andrea Aiselman, um, middle school science teacher over at the Garfield. Um, this project here is the Rube Goldberg machine transfer of energy project. And if any of you have a seventh grader in Revere right now, you've probably seen this project, uh, in some shape or form, uh, working in your house. I created this project looking, uh, at my students in the Google Meet and Zoom world and knowing that they weren't getting that hands-on interaction. They weren't playing with, uh, the toys of the science classroom. And so, uh, with the encouragement of my seventh grade science team, I built this project to really get back to the hands-on learning that I knew that they were missing out on. And also to engage them in the academic rigorous language of learning about energy and as well as the engineering design process. So if you could move to the next slide, please. So the criteria for success, um, was watching other Rube Goldberg machines. If anybody's ever heard about these, these are those crazy multi-level machines all to do one simple task, like blow out a candle or pop toast out of a toaster, but it might take seven steps to get there. Um, and the students went through the whole process of engineering, choosing a simple task, gathering materials, brainstorming, drawing the schematic, building the machine, testing it, and then, um, going even further and videotaping their, uh, machine and sending that, uh, to be seen. So if you could move to the next slide, I think we have an example of that. So, um, this is what one of my students drew as a schematic, um, outlining all of the steps, including, um, identifying where the transfers of energy would be. So he both, um, designed this project, utilized materials, uh, that we created baggies for. And Mr. Worsencroft will talk about that, um, in the next part of the presentation. And, uh, he designed it, he identified all the energy transfers, he created it, he videotaped it. And, um, we can see it in the next slide.
Okay. So the marble is gonna roll down this tape measure track, which then falls, hits the books, which is dominant fifth, falls, hits the, the ball, the lacrosse ball with needles on it, which then fall and hit the balloon. So the transfers of energy are, the marble is going down, the tape measure is gravitational energy and it's mechanical energy. Then when the ball falls on the tape measure track, that's gonna be gravitational energy because the ball is falling. When they hit the books and it's a dominant fifth, that's mechanical energy because some, an object is moving. And when the book falls over here, when the book falls and hits the, uh, the lacrosse ball, that's gonna be also mechanical energy because of the movement or kinetic energy, you could say. And when the, when the ball pops the balloon, that's gonna be sound energy because of the noise. It's also gonna be gravitational energy because the ball is falling off the table onto the balloon. Okay.
Take eight.
Thank you so much for showing that. So, um, all of my students got to engage in academic language. They got to talk to their peers. They got to do team practices of their various parts of their, um, Rube Goldberg machines. They got a lot of the aspects of the regular classroom in the virtual realm.
So the marble will.
No, no, that's fine. Um, and these are, uh, the bags of materials that we had students pick up or we actually even dropped them off at, um, students' homes. Now, I hear, um, the, the frustration, and you may have heard my own children in the background, of having everyone at home, but the teachers, as least at the Garfield and everyone who I'm talking to, um, through my, my cross-district PLG, we are working as hard as we can to recreate the classroom experience through this virtual world as best we can in this crazy year of the pandemic. So I want to pass it over to my colleague, Mr. Worsencroft, to explain, um, kind of even further, uh, what we did as teachers here.
Okay. Um, so this is the first year that Andrea and I got to work together. And right away, we, we found that we were both in love with project-based learning. And we were a little upset, you know, we can't do this project or that project because they need the materials at the school. But, uh, we did eventually come up with some equitable, um, oh, an equitable, equitable way of getting the materials out to the students who are happy with that. And we're very happy, um, with the results. And this is one of my students, Lindsay Reyes, I hope it works. And the, they were able to use academic language and do a, a project that was very engaging for them.
Hi teacher, this is my Rube Goldberg machine and I'm going to explain the, the different types of transfer energy. So this marble rolling through the paper roll with potential energy through, when, from mechanical kinetic energy, it's going to hit the dominos, then the dominos is going to fall. And then the last domino, it's going to fall through the paper roll with gravitational potential energy. Then it's going to turn it out the Christmas tree with electromagnetic energy.
So I think we're back to you, Steve.
All right. Well, well, thank you, Sean and Andrea. It's, uh, I absolutely enjoy watching the Rube Goldberg machines, but also as they both talked about the equity is, um, getting the materials to students and trying to, uh, replicate what's taking place in the classroom. Just a couple more slides is shared that I want to share, um, again, is the project-based learning that Sean talked about, um, the different types of assessments, um, and trying to replicate what we do in the classroom. Uh, this is from, I believe it's Ms. Murphy's, one of her students doing an art class. And again, engaging students through personalization, through choice, um, and options. And if we move on to the next slide as well, even through self-reflection. That, again, this is still part of the art class, um, is students making it relevant, applicable, Revere Beach pollution, cleaning up, but also again, having the opportunity to reflect and do an artist statement on what they, um, are doing, the work that they are creating. One of the final slides, um, although it says technology, and, and this is through, uh, technology that I want to point out is every one of our sixth graders is creating a digital portfolio. So if we look to the left, you can actually see that it has the four core classes plus their specials. And this is a portfolio that they have that lasts with them through their three years at Garfield Middle School. Uh, it provides the opportunity for them up to upload exemplars, to reflect on the work that they're doing. And really to take some pride in the work that they're doing. And I'm certainly proud of all the teachers and, and the students and everything, um, that, that has taken place at Garfield. Uh, and this is the point in time that if we, if we move on to a more slide, I was really hoping to be able to provide, uh, some student voice for the school committee as well, to, to share what their experiences are. This is Ladalis Gonzalez Hernandez's class. Unfortunately, there's some miscommunication and opportunities. She's unable to join us tonight. Um, gosh, I'm gonna take my glasses off. Sorry. But this is what the, what wellness and the PE, um, looks like a little bit in the remote world. Uh, and again, this is really something that as far as engagement and replicating what takes place in the classroom, if we move to the next slide, um, we'll see that it's connected to standards, um, uh, for, for the state and the wellness standards, of what is taking place. And ultimately, for the third slide, the next slide would be the opportunity that this is again done with, uh, Mr. Moscow and, uh, Mr. Ortiz, uh, one of our student teachers who, who worked with Mr. Moscow. Oh, no, no, we're not gonna be able to see any of these. So ultimately, what, what was here is, uh, Ladalis doing salsa dancing. And unfortunately, it's me walking you through it, or maybe if I could play some salsa in the background. If Alexa was hooked up, I'd be able to do that. But what the student did is actually uploaded on Flipgrid, uh, examples of her dancing, two different things. Uh, and then her teacher actually was able to provide personalized feedback through Flipgrid, um, to her. So again, these are the ways that we are engaging or trying to reengage our students and to make our, the learning to be rigorous, relevant, to develop those relationships, which again, we all recognize are difficult in this remote learning. But if we could move on to the final slide, I do hope and am hopeful that we are going to see some sunlight as we make our way through this forest of the pandemic. You know, it's, we, we're talking and certainly there's, there's with the vaccines and the hoping to get the hybrid as soon as possible and have students in front of us, that this blended learning, that these lessons that we're learning, the ways that we're engaging students and the ways that we haven't before, the, the work that all of our teachers are putting into, the, the time, the effort, the blood, sweat and tears, and this is going to, um, take us even further. And one of the things that we're excited about with Garfield Middle School is we're actually also applying for a grant through the state, through, um, DSC, which is allowed to us through the expanded learning time, in which we hope to take these project-based, universal design and learning, um, again, make them and bring them to our students in a hybrid model, be it in the spring, be it in the summer, and certainly as we continue on, um, into, uh, the fall of 2021. So again, thank you very much for allowing us to share some of the work that our teachers and students are producing. Again, I'm extremely proud of all of them. Um, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Steve and Andrea and Sean. Great job.
Do any members have any questions or comments?
I'm clapping.
No, Ms. Ty is clapping. Everyone's clapping, I think. Great job. Thank you.
It was great.
Well, thank you all. Thank you all that you're doing.
Be well.
Thank you as well.
All right. Sorry, getting the next group ready. Okay. All right. The next, um, item on the superintendent's report is a presentation from our English learner, uh, department. And so joining us is going to be, um, Mr. Mogavero, who is in charge of that, um, program and several of the teachers who work in that program. So I'm just, just take me a minute to bring them all up. So I'm just, just take me a minute to bring them all up. And I am looking for Michelle Irvin. Michelle, if you have your name. See if I can get it from Irvin. Oh, Ms. Irvin, here we go. Okay. So Mr. Mogavero is here. He's gonna uh get us started and then um we have several teachers, Jeannie La Rosa from the elementary, who we met briefly at the start of the meeting. Um Lorraine Martins Pereira from the middle school and Michelle Irvin and Mary Flynn from the high school. So Mr. Mogavero, I will give it to you. And do you want me to share my screen?
I think so. Or I think that's the best thing to do right now. Thank you.
Should be this. Okay.
Uh good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for inviting me tonight to share with you how we have been reaching our English learners during remote learning. In a moment, I will also be joined by our English learner teachers. Je- Jeannie La Rosa, Lorraine Martins Pereira, Michelle Irvin and Mary Flynn, who will also share with you how they have been teaching and engaging our students during this pandemic. Next, thank you. Uh during this presentation, I'll present our responses in the English learner department, which will include our instructional model, collaboration, family engagement, and then we will hear directly from our teachers and their point of view. Before I begin, just say a note, uh there are currently about, uh there's more than sixteen hundred and eighty English learners currently. And they are represented by forty languages and they and our students come from more than forty countries. The three largest language groups are our Spanish speakers, followed by our Portuguese and Arabic speakers. As you can see, we have quite a culturally, linguistically and diverse population of learners in Revere. As you're aware, it is difficult and challenging to teach students remotely, and we've heard that tonight. And it has affected each student differently. For our English learners who are learning English at their different levels of proficiency, student engagement is challenged as our teachers and all teachers need to adjust their teaching from in-person to remote learning and plan lessons and uh and activities by integrating listening, speaking, reading and writing skills, making them interactive and comprehensible for us students. Whether teaching in person or remotely, our English learner teachers must also consider, and every teacher must consider, the wide variety of unique language skills and acquisition needs that all our students possess and are and are based on their current English proficiency level and previous life and learning experiences. Nevertheless, our English learner teachers during this pandemic are truly dedicated, innovative and have been and have risen to the challenges. They have learned new ways to teach, plan, co-plan, collaborate. They continuously research online applications to enhance their own teaching and to support their students' learning so that it can mer- so that it can mirror in-person learning with their remote learning lessons. Despite the obvious limitations of the remote learning model, from my teacher observations and personal conversations with families, our teachers are doing an admirable job in developing lessons, creating opportunities for students to learn and also communicating with families. Our response is centered around universal scheduling, which includes dedicated ESL time, EL professional learning groups, family engagement, translations and ongoing assessments for new enrolling students at the parent information. Students continue to enroll in us, in our system, and immigrant students continue to enroll also. So it never, so so the enrollment never stops. And we also have assessment that happens every week at the parent information center of students that may or may not be English learners. Next, please. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't know what just happened. It just rolled like a.
Oh, that's okay. You know, that's fine.
There we go.
That's perfect. Because of universal uh scheduling at all schools for English learners, there is a dedicated block of ESL instructional time with ESL or English learner teachers work directly with students to build their proficiency skills in English every day. Included as the flex block are office hours at the middle and high school levels, which is a time where teachers can check in on students and support students' social, emotional concerns, as well as giving them extra help or technological help. Next slide, please. Thank you. In addition, teachers are continuously reaching out to students and families through translated messages on 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 the online applications such as Class Dojo, Remind, Lion Bridge, Talking Points, other tools. And of course, the uh typical telephone call that continues to be made to the homes. The Parent Information Center with its bilingual staff, the family liaisons that have been hired throughout the district and translators continue to continue to communicate with families to support them, resolve any issues and help make the, help make this learning more accessible to our students. Yes, thank you. Professional learning groups, as part of our remote learning plan to support our teachers during this time, teachers have been provided dedicated professional learning time to meet with their E- English learner colleagues and grade-level colleagues. This has provided teachers and with opportunities to co-plan, collaborate with all staff, consult with each other and share best practices in teaching remotely. Ongoing discussions and future discussions involve access testing, the new WeDOS twenty twenty standards, supporting newcomers in competency-based learning. Finally, translations, uh the the school system has made available numerous translations to communicate with families and and to keep them up to date with what is happening in the school. And our and and finally, the work of the our bilingual paraprofessionals is so important in reaching our English learners at this time, as they continue to assist teachers, provide small group instructions and at times provide clarifications in the first language when necessary. At this time, I would like to present teachers from our schools who have been working and engaging our students and doing a great job. Ms. Jeannie La Rosa will speak to us now about what is happening in her classes.
Sorry, I was just trying to unmute. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me and welcome to my classroom. Here we are. Um I I it's a complete pleasure to be here and to explain to you what I do on a daily basis. I've been working in Revere for twenty-seven years. Happy to say that I am still happy. Was that this has been the hardest year yet. Um so I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about what we use as ELL teachers at the elementary level and also what along with that, what I do. Um but here's some programs that we use, which is Savvas. It's the elementary school reading um program, which is also math-science related. We use reading A to Z, epic books and Readworks. Teachers are using Boom Cards and another program called Seesaw. Um it really, there are interactive activities where the kids can actually be online and and navigate the computer and move things around and really interact and send work and um the Seesaw really allows some videos and recordings as well. Okay, Dr. Kelly, thank you.
No, what's happening? I keep losing my thing here. Okay, sorry.
Um some learning platforms that we're using focus on communications and um it also really helps that the kids really learn at the elementary level, a little bit of technology, maybe or a lot, including myself. So Peer Deck encourages the kids to interact and engage in the lessons. Um Google Suite, Meet, Slides, interactive activities. We're using Class Dojo as a means of communication, which we've always used. Um but I feel like now with remote learning, it's almost on, it's pretty much daily basis. And the students can upload work. We can translate right on Dojo. I'm bilingual Spanish and I'm also learning a whole lot of Portuguese. So it's it's really simple for me to communicate with most of my students. But the Lion Bridge Translation Service I use with a little boy from Rwanda. In a matter of five minutes, I had a person speak in Rwanda, translating, we're on a video call. Um and so that's another that we use, which is great. Next. Here's an example of my schedule in particular. I teach students, so I teach newcomers. A newcomer is, I'm sorry if you already know, but I'll just go over. A newcomer is a student who has just gotten here in the first year or the second year and they've only been here a little bit towards the end of the first year. Um in English language learning, we have five levels. So one being a non-English speaker or very limited and five being ready to be ma- mainstream. So my particular area of teaching this year is levels ones and twos. Yes, it's extremely hard. No, they don't speak much English at all. Um so the interactive activities with the technology really, really benefits them. Um has it been extremely difficult to get them online and teach them? Yes, it has. Do I meet them in the lobby with it, um sometimes with a translator or myself with masks and sixty feet distance and trying to show them how to use Chromebooks? Yes, we do. Do we deliver materials? Yes, I deliver materials. We have help, principals helping? Yes. Assistant principals helping? Yes. Parents are coming. They're picking out packages almost on a weekly basis. So we can give our kids what they need to interact with these activities. Um so the schedule, oh, sorry. I just want to.
Oh, sorry. That's all right. Go ahead.
The schedule is kind of unique. Basically, I see a different group of kids um every forty minutes or so. I'm on camera all day long, even at twelve o'clock. I meet all my colleagues at two o'clock to three o'clock to do um professional learning groups, but it benefits the kids because they're with they're with me or they're with another teacher if they're not with me. And because they don't know much English and even the high-needs kids or even the little baby kindergartners, they really need that one-on-one contact. So this schedule allows the students to have allotted time during the day. Um sometimes, sometimes once most, a lot of the newcomers see me twice a day and other teachers have the similar schedules as well. Okay, next. So I just included this um beginner English language learner newcomer lesson. Yes, it looks basic, but it really isn't. So I have about six to eight words there um to teach that. It starts on Monday. Uh I roll out the background building and knowledge on the Four Seasons in particular here. It is basically a piece of notebook paper. At the time, it was October and we had limited resources. So um we started on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, really looking at vocabulary, reading about it, enhancing it. But on Fridays, I do a culminating activity where it's a hands-on project. So this was a hands-on project, project, and we use basic household items. They colored paper, they use tissue, they use cotton balls if they have them. If not, they use a Kleenex. And they tore that up to to just show the different, the changes in the leaves on the trees, as well as enhancing the vocabulary. And and so I included this because we do um, I do communicate with the parents almost on a daily basis, especially if they need to pick up a packet. So this parent speaks Portuguese. I do have limited Portuguese. I can't really write it as well as I do in Spanish. But I just wanted to let um the student's mom know that she can come pick up the packet. And she just clicks one little button on it and says translate, and she translates it to English. And then she also writes in Portuguese and then she, I translate it back to me and I said, oh, thanks. So she said she would be there and I asked her if she could be there before four o'clock. And she was able to translate that within a matter of a second and I was able to translate it back to me in a matter of a second. And it's that easy. And Dojo does translate in over twenty different languages. So it's a huge help. Thank you and thank you for um having me share.
Thanks, Jeannie.
You're welcome.
Thank you. At at this time, we're going to hear from our middle school teacher, uh Lorraine Martins Pereira, who's currently teaching at the Garfield Middle School. Thank you.
I was muted, of course. So I thank you for having me tonight. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lorraine Martins Pereira and I'm an EL teacher at the Garfield Middle School. As we all know, it this year has been extremely challenging and I'm very proud of our students um resilience, positive attitude and willingness to adapt to a new normal. Uh similarly to my EL colleagues, my students and I use many online platforms. Such platforms include Flipgrid, which is great, especially uh for working um in this speaking domain. Since we have a lot of students who are timid and shy to speak uh in our virtual class, that's a huge help with the speaking domain. We utilize Google Slides on a daily basis, Google Forms, Google Docs, Peer Deck in order to have real-time engagement in our live lessons. And we also use it to be um student-paced during asynchronous work time. Uh Kahoot, EdPuzzle, Screencastify, Kami, Newzilla, Jamboard, Google Meet and my favorite Zoom and its wide board features to promote inefficient and engaging instruction targeting all domains which are listening, speaking, reading and writing. Um Google Voice is also used to maintain communication with parents and guardians through texting. Uh that has been the go-to app that most of us are using at the middle school level. It's great because we do get to have that contact with parents and let them know um what is going on. I am trilingual. I do speak Spanish and Portuguese, which helps tremendously in communicating with parents uh and guardians. Um and like I mentioned previously, I teach intermediate ELs and that means that most of my ELs are levels two and three. And the slides that I have in front of you um demonstrate this slide and the next one. Um if you'd like to move it forward, Dr.
This one here?
Yes.
Okay.
You are, I chose to show you, that's a final product of um our students being able to use technology skills on an opinion writing that also demonstrated real life, it has real-life application. They had to tell uh to tell me to write a letter and basically say if students should wear a uniform or not, a very hot topic in middle school uh for middle school students. And the other um writing prompt had to do with being uh able to use cell phones in school or not, which again, very relevant for middle schoolers, having that real-life component that really engages students in expressing their voices. Um there, this writing assignment also had um me, was meaningful to them because they had to use a real-life application. They had to share slides. They had to create their own slides. Like I said, this is the final product, but there was a lot of back and forth between the students and I messaging in real time, saying you should make adjustments here, use transitional words there. Um so in order to produce this final product, students had to use academic English, utilize the correct conventions in the English language. And in addition to it, they had to get direct, like I have said before, live feedback, which was given to students by me during the task using Google um Slides Live. And through this assignment, students were also able to use technology skills, work on further developing the academic writing skills while also conversing, strengthening the speaking skills by early presenting to our virtual class their final product. And I was very proud of their hard work. Like I said, um again, despite the challenges our ELs in all different levels from beginners and newcomers to my intermediates, they have been demonstrating grit um in learning technology skills while also acquiring and developing these skills in English. And um And like I said, very proud of them. A lot of learning opportunities happening with the skills that will also suit them in the real life. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. That was great.
Thank you. And now we're going to hear from our high school English learner teachers, Michelle Irvin and Mary Flynn. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Irvin. I teach Level One at the high school. This is my third year at the high school, but I have been teaching for about twenty-four years total. So we also use at the high school, a ton of different websites. And I wanted to get an idea of the department in general, what we use besides Zoom, Peer Deck and Google Suites, which are kind of like district-wide websites that are used. So we polled all of the teachers in the department to find out what they use, including content, sheltered content teachers. And these were kind of the, I'd say top five, but this is in order of like how many votes they got. So the, so the ones that have multiple websites were tied. So YouTube Talking Points, Formative and EdPuzzle, Delta Math, Kami and Class Kick. Focusing on the talking points is big. And I wanted to make sure that, to focus on that because that's how we've been communicating with, with families. Talking points has allowed us to, it does direct translation. So it's a text messaging service and the parents don't actually have to subscribe to it. They just get a text message and it's translated in their language automatically. And then when they text back, it's translated back into English automatically. So there's no extra button anybody has to push. Nobody has to subscribe to anything. It's an immediate text that goes to that. And the department has had a lot of success being able to keep in contact with families using Talking Points. So this is an example, I have two slides. It was an example of a Level One class work. So a couple of things I've, I've been really trying to do and researching a lot is making sure that it's interactive and that it replicates what we, as much as possible replicates what we do in the classroom. So I have been using an app called, or a website called Class Kick and this is an example of some vocabulary work. This is the exact same thing I would do in class on paper. But of course, we can't do it on paper, but they are able to type in. And you can see the green marks are where I'm circling the errors. And then you can see where they, they were able to go in immediately in real time, just like we're in the classroom. And then when they fix whatever it is, I put a little check mark in real time while they're sitting there instantly, they get feedback. Next slide. And this is also using Class Kick, but a reading comprehension example and citing textual evidence. So again, this is, I'm trying to replicate what I do in the classroom. This is an exact paper that I would use in the classroom. I just scan it and then put it up there and then they can go through, they can read the text, circle the answer. I can put the little green check mark that says they got it right. And then down at the bottom, they mark the text citing the, the evidence in the text that goes with each comprehension question. And then those numbers are manipulatives. So they can actually click on the number and move it around the screen and put it into the location that they want. So really trying to make sure that it's interactive, it replicates what we already do and it's immediate feedback as they're doing it.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Mary Flynn. I've been teaching in Revia for eighteen years. I can't lose my accent. But I've also spent a lot of times teaching, or spent a lot of time teaching in England and Australia. Okay, I teach Level Two students who are at the early intermediate to intermediate level. This slide contains instructions and support for a writing and speaking assignment that I gave just last week. My objective was to have students choose eight topics over two lessons because it was important to explain the steps from a possible twenty-five topics. Six are shown top right on the slide and create complete sentences on Peer Deck, which is a Chromebook extension. This extension allows me to watch the students create their responses. I can give feedback and also remind students who need to start or continue their work. I can also spy on them and find out who isn't doing any work. Once I corrected the sentences, students were asked to practice reading their sentences aloud. And for the speaking part, they were asked to record themselves reading their sentences on Flipgrid, another Chrome extension. They could rerecord if they noticed that they did not check yes to all the expectations that I had set. On the bottom right, there is a sentence checker indicating the six features of the sentence available on the student's slides. I created this about two years ago for students and I asked them to use it to check the sentences before submitting them because it's very difficult for them to remember that the pronoun I is capitalized and they still forget to put capital letters at the beginning and periods at the end. So they don't always see the errors, but I believe that it helps them practice self-checking. Next slide, please. Thanks, Dr. Kelly. The next, this show, sorry, this slideshow is one student's eight completed sent correct answers that he practiced before recording himself reading. And they were related to topics that they could relate to themselves.
I think we're losing your connection a little bit, Mary.
Okay. Thank you. This is Michelle now.
Okay.
So this is a, an example of a Level Three work. It is very similar to what I had shown on the Level One. It's a reading comprehension and citing your work. This is done on a website called Formative, which is also very simple in that the student has to read it. You can see the reading comprehension. I believe this, it looks more like an MCAS work. The student has to mark the multiple choice and then down at the bottom where it says, show your work, that's where the student annotates the text and is able to demonstrate the, where they find the answer in the text and how they found it and annotating that text. And again, it's also in real time, the teacher can watch the student actually going through their marking it. They see whether it was right or wrong immediately. They get immediate feedback, just like they would in the classroom. Next slide.
Did we lose Mary?
I think she's
Yes, I'm on mute. Sorry. Right. So this Level Four assignment is from Dr. Asha Chan, who teaches Level Four. Jen Hayes teaches Level Three and a lot of the work that she does in Level Three leads the students on to be able to do the work for Dr. Chan. Students in Level Four are not quite ready for regular classes, but they certainly will be prepared after they're finished studying with Asha. And this year is the first year we've introduced a Level Five taught by Jerry DeLore. So we're really responding to the problems that we've been facing, not being able to instruct in the amount of hours that we use to instruct. So we've, let me think, we have put in a gap or we filled a gap by adding Level Five. This slide and the following slide show Asha's instructions for this semester one final essay this current school year. Thus, the instructions and any assistance were given remotely. It's a very challenging, multi-step project and similar to projects they do in Level Three and then they will be doing in regular English classes. Asha also included graphic organizers for her students to go through the planning stages of an essay that not shown here due to time constraints. Asha is in regular contact with ELA teachers and attends their PLG meetings. So her students are well-prepared for regular English classes when they exit our ELL program. Although they are still able to seek help from ELL teachers if necessary. We don't just throw them into the wild. And one thing that does engage my kids when I work from home is my life-size cutout of Tom Brady. So they're engaged when I'm at home at least. Okay. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present. Thank you, Michelle and Dr. Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do, do any committee members have any questions or comments? Ms. Thai?
Yes, I have a question about the flex block at Middleland High School. At which time you carry on conversations about social and emotional concerns? How do you do that with maybe the nine percent of kids who don't speak the major language? For example, you know, a kid who speaks Tagalog or I'm not even sure what language I could identify on that. That must be a real challenge for you, although I'm sure you're up to it. But what do you do about those social and emotional conversations? For the kids who speak the, let's say, minor languages?
If I may speak to that, I do have a few students who do speak Arabic and Turkish and I unfortunately do not speak those two languages, only Spanish and Portuguese. So we do use Lion Gate to help us with the translation and we do have very close contact with the guidance counselors and adjustment counselors at our school where we communicate every day on a daily basis. If we have concerns, if we have questions on how the student is doing academically and socially as well, students are not showing up. So we do have those conversations on a daily basis with the adjustment counselors and guidance counselors and together we reach out to parents. I have used Google Translator to communicate with parents myself, you know, and translate that on the email to get the conversation going. And then when we do have meetings, we do use the Lion Gate Bridge translators, which are more reliable. But the conversation is there and Google Voice has been amazing because we get the text messaging with parents in real time. Parents have been really open to talking to us and letting us know if they need help. So if their students are going to be absent, we have to remind them, they have to let the school know because they will let us know and they reach out to us, to the EL teachers, letting us know a lot of the things that they need help with. So we're kind of like the middlemen. The, the school and the families as well. And it's a privilege, honestly, to be working with, with the kids. As an EL myself, a former English language learner, I know the value of having the school and the family working together. And I can tell you that our counselors are doing a phenomenal job reaching out to the families with the help of us, with, with the teachers. We're really trying to work with them. And that's how we do it, at least at GMS.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that and your entire presentation. Thank you.
To Mary again, I just wanted to add, our social workers, even for the, well, for the Spanish, Arabic, Portuguese, and we have a Turkish teacher and Albanian teacher at school. The social workers and the guidance counselors, as well as admin staffer and our directors are really doing a wonderful job to, to try and relieve the students of the anxiety that they have. So I just, the social workers are phenomenal.
Yes, agreed. The work of the angels. Thank you.
And the nurses.
One of the things we talked about in our waiver to the state when they didn't appreciate that we had fewer than forty hours of synchronous learning at the high school. And one of the things I said in my testimony to the Board of Education and to the commissioner is if we don't have asynchronous time, then kids can't seek out the services that they need. If we have them fully scheduled in their math, their English, their history, their science, then they don't have a chance to talk to the social worker, the English learner teacher, the guidance counselor, all of those other folks who do, whose work is just as important, if not more important to, as the academic teacher.
Right. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item in the superintendent's report is just an update on in-person learning and athletics. And I feel like we actually covered a good chunk of that in the discussion that we had earlier. But just a few high points that I wanted to jump on. You guys don't have to stay. If you want to, I can make you participants again. Do you want me to do that? Okay, Jeanie's, Jeanie's going to have a cup of coffee. You good, Lorraine? Mary? Yeah.
I'm good. Think I'll do the same. I'll get that cup of coffee.
Do it. All right.
I think I'll be getting a wine.
There you go, Mary.
Very much.
And Michelle, you good? All right. So just a few things that we have continued to work on. We are still, I know people have questions about this, but we are still working with the Revia Teachers Association on a plan to continue our impact bargaining to return to in-person learning in a hybrid model. We're going to meet with them again tomorrow and I know that we're looking forward to that discussion. We are very pleased to see the rates coming down still. It's been a couple of weeks in a row now for Revia that we've seen the community positivity rate drop fairly significantly. And we are still very optimistic for a three-season athletic program beginning later in the month of March and that would include our, our fall sports, our winter sports and our spring sports. We continue to work with Mr. Shea and he continues to work with the other athletic directors in the Greater Boston League to come up with a plan for games after a significant number of the cities and towns have completed their conditioning program, which is required for two weeks before any competitions can be held. I know that Chelsea and Lynn and a couple of the other districts, Suberville, are where we are. They haven't started their conditioning programs yet. So I know there's a lot of anxiety in the community. A lot of people are saying things like, everybody's back except for us. And I just want to make sure that folks are being clear and truthful in, in that. And I don't think people are saying that to be deceitful. I think people really believe that everybody is back except for us and that's just not the case. But we are in close communication with all of those districts, whether they're practicing like Malden is or not the way we are. So we'll continue that work. Let's see what else. Our goal is to begin with our special needs students and get them back for in-person learning. We recognize them to be the kids who struggle the most in our remote environment and want to make sure that they, above everybody else, I mean, everybody, we want everybody back. But we want to start with our special needs kids as a first cohort and then slowly bring in more and more students until we're back up to our roughly fifty percent capacity with as many kids who want to participating in a hybrid model. As our reopening plan indicates, our version of a hybrid model is going to be one week on and one week off. It's a little bit different than a lot of the districts that you might have heard doing two days in school with a cohort A and then a day off and then two days with a cohort B. And switching the cohorts that way requires a day off in the middle, which is something that we are hoping to avoid by doing the Week A and Week B cohorts. There's not more that I can share about scheduling because we are still working on the union with that. But people should anticipate a more traditional school day, similar to what we had pre-COVID, especially when the kids are doing their in-person learning. When they're on their remote week, they'll have fewer touchpoints with teachers in a synchronous learning environment. But it's, they still, you still should expect a beginning of the day and an end of the day when students should be doing their work. We are working with the state. I had two calls today about COVID testing for students and for teachers. Once we return to some in-person learning, we do want to make sure that everybody is as safe as, as possible. And that's one way we could mitigate any issues. We've talked about testing since August as a school committee. And there is a state program. I did have confirmation from Associate Commissioner Russell Johnson today that we would be eligible for that program. And so we're meeting with representative from the Shaw Foundation and somebody from Desi, who will help us actually craft the, the workup of what that will look like so that we can actually get testing in place. Of course, everybody's hesitant Of course, everybody's hesitant to do that until we have a firm idea of coming back to school because those are limited resources that are, you know, need to be well monitored. And then the last thing I would share is with our ventilation system, as you know, our ventilation systems were perfectly fine in most buildings, but at the high school, the Beauchamp and the Garfield, there were some additional things that we wanted to do, particularly at the Beauchamp and the Garfield. We wanted to add MERV thirteen filters to all of the UN events in each classroom. Those are being installed this week. They started today, actually. And the MERV thirteen filters at the high school are completed. They've all been changed out in every single classroom. And as you know, the air purification systems have been in for several weeks, so as we do return to, prepare for a return to in-person learning, those pieces are in place. I just want to share all of that.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any members have any questions or comments? Mr. Snella.
Just to reiterate what the superintendent mentioned, Ms. Gravellisi and myself, along with members of custodial staff, did visit every school.
Excuse me, Mr. Snella? Mr. Snella, that's under safety and security sub, reporter subcommittees?
I apologize. It just
That's okay.
went in with the superintendent was saying. I'll leave it to the chairperson. Thank you.
It's in the report, so I just didn't want to have to repeat it again when we got to that part.
Okay.
All right, any?
Two other quick things. One is just a quick update on the new Revere High School. That work is progressing and the mayor and committee woman Bronson Rizzo and I were part of the designer selection panel. We met on February second with the team from MSBA. And I'm pleased to say that we selected Perkins Eastman as our designer for the new high school. So that's really exciting and our owner's project manager, Leftfield, is currently working with Perkins Eastman and the city to establish a contract. And hopefully at our next school committee meeting, we have to make sure the contract gets executed and all of that. But hopefully at our next meeting, if not shortly thereafter, they will be able to present to the committee some ideas that they have, some of the big picture ideas that they're thinking about that made them a forerunner from the other applicants for us. So that's really exciting that we're moving forward with that. Their, their primary task once we get going will be to help us first finalize where is this high school going to be? That's going to be the big question that'll drive the rest of the questioning that comes after that. And then the other update somewhat related accelerated PR projects, accelerated repair projects at the Beauchamp and Lincoln are on track and I want to thank the city council and the school committee for voting to fund the feasibility studies for those two projects. At the Lincoln, we're working on new doors and windows and at the Beauchamp, we are changing out the heating system. So we did send those hard copies of the votes to the MSBA today. And we expect that they will assign an OPM to meet with us at their March board meeting and then we can move forward with planning for those projects. So not a dull moment in the school department.
No.
And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any, any members have any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the student representative report. Ryan, take us away.
Yep, so I'm just gonna share my screen real quick because I actually put there a little slideshow.
Hold on, Ryan. I think I have to make you a co-host. Okay, there you go. You should be set now.
Okay. All right, so if it came in any surprise, obviously tonight I was going to advocate that students do want to go back into the school. Can everybody hear me okay? All set. All right, so obviously we saw in the open forum, I've been trying to really engage with kids, trying to get them to advocate for a return to school because not only personally, but a lot of other students have seen the negative effects that the remote learning has done to students. And I do feel that there is not really a very staunch voice for getting kids back into the building. It's always the, the after questions that come along with that. I'd want to be, I want to be the strong advocate for this cause, so. So our current status as far as how remote learning is going, so I can personally say I'm part of a few clubs and a few sports. Student involvement is probably at its all-time lowest. And the reason I believe this is the case is obviously when you're not in the in-person setting, it's very tough for students to really engage with the leaders of these clubs, to really engage with extracurricular activities and this is something, this is definitely a barrier that I've saw as far as I'm in senior student council in the classes below me, student council in clubs like MALL UN. There's really a limit as to what these clubs can do and I feel like as an urban community, as someone who's been touched by these clubs, has made kind of education more than just coming into school. I really feel that these clubs kind of got the worst of the remote learning and it's really a shame that it's kind of just deteriorated so badly. On top of this, I'll go into the GBL winter sports. So obviously the GBL is slated to start March first for the winter sports now. We all know that date is probably likely to change and that also is unfortunate, but I'm hoping that the Revere Teachers Association and the school committee can come to some sort of compromise on the terms of their reopening so that sports can be a possibility, but I'll get into that more later. Also want to just add that as far as resources in the community, I feel like there really isn't any to begin with. It's been really tough, like being an athlete, trying to, trying to get kids out into the safe environment to still practice sports when we still have all these pending seasons. And it's not just now, but prior to this date, when we've been told that, okay, we're gonna play football in a month. We're gonna do this in a week. And then we have to organize practices without our coaches. It's been really difficult, especially speaking as a captain and knowing a lot of my friends who are captains of their own given teams. Not having those resources of being able to meet with coaches in person, not having the resources of being able to use city facilities such as basketball courts, having the fields open to us all the time, being able to use the gymnasium, which according, best of my knowledge, there's no teachers that are in the gymnasium. It's really, just really is a burden for students that are not able to take advantage of resources, especially in a community where resources matter so much. All we all know about the demographic of Revere and these extracurricular activities and these opportunities in the community that we usually had as students, not having them this year. It's definitely been a very detrimental factor and it's kind of making remote learning even worse than what it is at its face value. And lastly, students losing interest in extracurricular activities. I could tell you, I could give you guys a student report on all the great things that are going on in remote learning, but I honestly don't have enough things to say when a lot of students are just losing interest in extracurricular activities. The dynamic that I've found with students is that the more we push back, the more we say, okay, we're gonna go back now, but now we're pushing it back. We're gonna have an in-person conference now, but now we're gonna push it back. It's starting to be, when you say, okay, well, something's better than nothing, a lot of students are gonna disagree with that and saying, okay, well, right now, nothing is better than something. Because rather than playing sports, rather than engaging extracurricular activities, students are picking up jobs, they're hanging out with their friends, they're doing things that sometimes have no value to them as compared to when they were in these extracurricular activities. And I can say that personally, as far as the football team, I've seen a record number, at least in my four years being on the team, of students and athletes who are not playing, who played the previous year before, citing reasons where it's just not worth it for them anymore, or it's just a five-game schedule, it's just not worth it. Why play five games? I could pick up a job because I'm not doing anything else. There's no extracurriculars after school. So I think that's just something that I don't think a lot of people understand, but hopefully that gives some insight to the negotiators on both sides when trying to compromise on a solution to get at least some group of kids back into the building. So so what we want and specifically the students. The number one thing that I have struggled with trying to figure out and the reason why I've been asking a lot of questions, at least to my teachers, administration, is just transparency. It felt like the last school committee was the first time I really had any idea of what the reopening plan looked like as far as also the language of the reopening MOA. And I can guarantee you that not a lot of students understand the relationship between the Revere Teachers Association and the school committee and kind of just the pace of their compromise. We always hear about what ifs and when, but we never really hear about what actions are being taken and transparency, I think, is a big problem because as of right now, we're told that sports are supposed to happen March first. And based off everything we've heard in this meeting, it seems like that's not going to happen, but nobody's really said it. March first is less than two weeks away. And these students still haven't met with their coaches since March 12th of last year. So you just gotta understand that the transparency to students is a big factor, is why students are losing interest. When students can't, they're not getting fed information, they're starting to just distance themselves and I don't blame them because I felt the same way plenty of times. Another thing, I would really stress the Revere Teachers Association and the school committee to just push a group-by-group approach to return in-person learning. I have heard a lot of feedback that the school to some teachers is not completely safe. And I understand that everybody has their own, what they, opinion on what is safe and what is not safe. But at some point, we need to compromise. If it's one small group of students and I'll work off of what Dr. Kelly said about bringing special needs students back into the building. I feel that that is a great, a great plan as we, as obviously we can all agree that they probably are the students that are missing out the most and are probably falling behind the most. So I feel like it's, it's almost a two-pronged approach by doing so. Not only can we get students that really need the help that would benefit from in-person learning, but also we can possibly open up to more resources that'd be helping students in the community, whether that be extracurriculars such as clubs, such as sports. That would just be a great step towards really getting all students back into the building. And I feel that now we can't prolong this any longer. If we need to negotiate now, we need to really push for getting students back in now. Because it's at the point where, I mean, students have really given up. And we need to start pushing for this now because personally, and I know it's the same for a lot of students, I'm only looking for getting out of the building if nothing's gonna change. There's four months left of the senior year, a senior class. What also, what do I, what do I have to gain? If we, I know that the people that are in power making these decisions are not helping us get back to the building, they're not helping us get these resources, they're not helping us play sports. So that's really been something that a lot of students have to deal with and as a result, lack of interest, lack of participation, extracurriculars. Also want to stress the need for a safer environment for teachers. I have heard a lot of comments about how it's not safe enough. Like I said, being safe in the building is opinionated. And I feel that if the Revere Teachers Association is, and the teachers involved that are not comfortable going back into the building, given that they're probably not going to get vaccines, as we've kind of, well, I believe the admins made a statement clear that it's not a prerequisite for getting back, getting students back into the building. I feel like the school committee and the Revere Teachers Association can go above and beyond to make the school as safe as possible, then that could be a great line to compromise on. And I feel like if we can make the teachers comfortable in the building, whatever that might be, besides the vaccines, because I do believe that if we wait on the vaccines, we'll never go back. But if we can do whatever it needs to be to get students to feel safe in the building, the school committee and the teachers association come to a compromise on that, then I think that's golden. I think that's the right route to take. And just to elaborate, now is the time that we need to come to a compromise. When I, I'll say this, when I first joined this school committee, when I ran to get this position as an officer, I ran solely on the campaign idea that I wanted kids back into school. I knew that there was a great following for that. I knew that a lot of students wanted to be back at school. I knew a lot of students wanted their sports. I don't think anybody could have imagined that we'd be here about to be in March and still in the same situation that we were back when we left school the other March last year. It's becoming to the point where as a student advocate, if the voice that I, and the voice and advocacy that I portray to the school committee and the Revere Teachers Association, if it's not being heard, I'm starting to lose the, kind of the motivation as to why I even come on these meetings. It's coming to the point where I feel like my voice isn't heard as a student. I feel like no matter how hard students advocate to get us back into school, there's always just something new. Whether it's, okay, well, it's the numbers, they're coming down, but they're not there yet, or it's now we need vaccines or now, well, we, we don't want it to one grouping because now it's not safe. I feel like it's really at the point where how much more can I advocate? How much more clear can I get that we need students back in school? And that as a student, there's nothing I can do about it. It's all in the hands of the Revere Teachers Association, the administration and the school committee. Now, I believe that all the members of all these given committees and the association can all come together and compromise, and I know it's easier said than done, and there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. But I will, I do believe that there's been plenty of times, plenty of time prior to this meeting that there could, that compromise could have been made, that there could have been better language, could have been more dialogue, we're still not there yet. And my question is, how much longer is that going to take? Because personally, I know for a lot of students, the line, the line of how much longer they're gonna wait is, is just, we're right about there. We're students, you're just gonna give up, they're not gonna care anymore and it's gonna be a big disgrace. If, if we only got into the last month, I wouldn't even want to come back in. And I know a lot of students feel the same because it's just not worth it for them. So I really stress the teachers association, the school committee and the administration need to come together on terms and dialogue and just any language of any reopening MOA, whether it's adjusting it, whether it's impact bargaining. You, everybody involved in that process needs to come together because it's not heard in the union, it's not heard in the committee, it's heard in the students. And I definitely feel that it's heard in students more than anybody else, more than the teachers, more than anybody else in this whole process because this is, every, every school year matters to students and missing on a one school year can be detrimental to the rest of your life. So I really hope that the Revere Teachers Association, the school committee and all administrations can put aside the differences and really come together as a collective community with the better interest of the students in mind. Obviously in regards to all the safety protocols and make it safer for teachers, any other people in the process, or at the point where we need a compromise, we need students back into the building. We need students playing sports. We need students taking advantage of these resources. Because right now, everybody involved in this process is doing a disservice to the students by prolonging this conversation any longer. And I know, I know there's a lot of talk about other schools that are going back and it is to say that not all schools are going back, but I do feel like there are other schools that are trying harder than us. I feel like there's other schools that are focusing more on the dialogue, that are compromising more, that are at least allowing the students to participate in sports, giving more leeway as to facilities they can use, giving more resources. So when I see all my friends from other schools that are pretty much taking advantage of all these resources, the town over, five minutes away from where I live, I just think, well, what, why can't our, why can't our school committee, why can't our teachers association, why can't they pull together? What are we missing? So I really think that all these given groups can come together. I know everybody's capable of doing it, just I need, I really need the proof. I really want to see action taken, taken place and it's just how much more can, can I wait? How much more can students wait? I really want, I really want this voice to be heard. I really hope that tomorrow during the negotiating meeting, that there could be a more stronger stance or stronger push to get back into students that all the members of these given committees can come together on terms and language that would prosper a new, like a safer reopening to schools. So I really do believe that it's, it's not in the hands of the students. I'm helpless in this. All the students are helpless in this and we're the ones suffering more than anybody else. And there's no debate to that. I know everybody's suffering, but nobody's suffering worse than the students. So I really hope that the Revere Teachers Association, the school committee, and any other members of the process can come together on a compromise to not only get students back into school, get students playing sports, get students back into extracurricular activities, to get students using the resources of the community that made us such a prominent community and such a great school system prior to this big mess. So I really hope that got through to all the members of the negotiating team, all the people who have to say in this. I really hope you guys put the students first, obviously in regards to your own personal safety. But I really hope that this is the last time I have to mention this and by the next school committee meeting, we're talking about how well we're doing. And I just want us, one last thing. It was, this was a statement that we gave out to a lot of teachers, but I want to remember this year, not for the adversity that we faced, but for how we overcame it. And I really think that there's still some time left to overcome this adversity, but we are running out of time. And I really hope that a compromise is met upon. And I'm open to any questions, anything you want me to add, any, anything you want me to answer, ask me right away. I want to be as transparent. I want to give you guys any advice, anything I could do to make this compromise easier for all the sides. I just, I really want to see students back in the building. We are running out of time. So I hope that got through to all the people that are involved in this process and that a compromise can be reached. That is all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And thank you for using your platform to, to amplify the messages that you're hearing in the voices of the students. Very well said, very eloquent. Thank you. Do any members have any comments or questions? Okay. Thank you again, Ryan. Really appreciate it. Next item is the Uh, next item is the consent calendar. I do not believe we have any items that would be coming off the consent calendar.
No.
Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, roll call.
Mister Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mister D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mister Ferrante?
Yes.
Miss Grabelisi?
Yes.
Mister Sonella?
Yes.
Miss Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Uh, we'll move on to the report of subcommittees. Uh, as I said earlier, we have a safety and security subcommittee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, there has been so much talk about the safety of our schools and it's always been in question. And Ryan did also mention, you know, there's been questions, are the schools safe? Are they following all the guidelines? So on and so forth. So um, with that being said, the safety and security subcommittee um recently had the opportunity to tour all eleven of our schools that are housed in the eight buildings in our district. The committee consists of myself, Mister Sonella and Miss Thai. Um, also attending the tours were Mrs. Bronson Rizzo and Mister Ferrante. Um, Mister D'Ambrosio was unable to attend due to his prior work commitments. So the purpose of these tours was to view, was to view the work that had been done tirelessly by our plant and maintenance director, custodians and administrators regarding the preparedness for the safe reopening of our schools. Following the past and the current, currently updated CDC recommendation, recommendations on safely reopening schools, the key mitigation strategies for in-person learning are outlined in our reopening plan on the RPS website. All these strategies include markings to promote social distancing, clear movement plans, visual cues, mask wearing and hand sanitizing, social distancing through desk spacing in classrooms and class size limits. Other strategies included adequate PPE supplies, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, ventilation audits, contactation, contact tracing and isolation rooms if a student or staff member becomes symptomatic. Um, so these are all the things that are in our reopening plans that we went to the schools to view. Uh, oh, Diane is sharing her screen already. Thank you, Diane.
Is it, is this a good time? Is this okay?
Um, yeah, I was going to do it at the end, but that's great. It just goes along with, nope, that's fine. Oh, okay, back, here we go.
Tell me when.
That's fine. Um, another part of our visits to the school and we also got updates from Carl Swenson on the ventilation audit, which Diane Kelly actually updated us on during her superintendent's report. Um, I did receive that information from Carl Swenson about the MRF thirteen filters for the classrooms and the unit events. They've been delivered to the high school Garfield and Beechmont and installations of the filters are completed at RHS and work began today on the other schools. Um, and the high school is the only school that required the standalone air purifier. Um, at the start of the tours, you know, we had a lot of questions, um comments, concerns. Uh, we had questions for the administrators, the custodians, for the plant and maintenance. All of our questions were addressed and efficiently and effectively answered all along the way. Um, with all that being said, we as a committee are very happy to report uh that our schools have done an amazing job putting all the strategies that I mentioned in place and are completely ready for the safe return of our students. Um, we'd also like to commend the administrators, staff members, custodians and the director of plant and maintenance for all their hard work and dedication. So we do, as Diane knows, we have a PowerPoint presentation that was um put together by Dr. Galucci. He did join us on every tour and we'd like to just let you see, um, you know, what we saw as we went along. Oh, there's me and Fred in front of Beechmont. Okay, next slide, please.
One thing I noticed here is you can see the windows that we had installed just above the, you know, in these classrooms above the awning.
That was amazing. The work done by Carl with those was absolutely amazing. So you can see here, we took pictures at every school that we were at. You can see that there's directional arrows on the walls and the floors at every school. You can see there's six-foot spacing markers on the floors. Um, there's arrows, directional arrows in the stairwells. Uh, everywhere you go, there's arrows telling you which way to go. So as far as, you know, the building flow, when the students are in, uh, this teachers, the custodians, the administrators, they're ready for that. Um, they do realize it's a fluid situation and they may have to adjust when the students get back in, but they're very well prepared. Uh, next slide, please. As you can see, which was also outlined um in our reopening plan on the RPS website, all the bathrooms, um, every other sink is blocked off, urinals are blocked off. So that, that will promote social distancing. The stalls have every other stall blocked off to promote social distancing. You can see the water bubblers are covered. Um, you can also see that there are some hands-free, touchless water stations. So if the children do need water, they can go up with their water bottle and go to the touchless station. Um, so next slide, please. You can see in the classrooms, um, the classrooms look great, six feet of spacing between the desks, um, all facing forward. They, each classroom was measured to find out the appropriate amount of desks that can be put into each room. So those are all ready to go. Next slide, please. And this was a really unique part. A lot of the schools, every school had a different way of marking their desks to show where each space should be. So that would be a visual cue for the students themselves, a visual cue for the teachers if there's a desk out of alignment. Um, when the custodians come in at night and they're cleaning, they have a visual cue, oh, these desks go here. Some, some put X's under their desks, some marked all four corners, some were marked opposite ends. But everybody had a great idea as to how they were going to keep their desks in line. Next slide, please. Safety signage everywhere you go. You can see the six-foot spacing, six feet apart, wash your hands, wear a mask, um, protect others, protect yourself. So that signage is in every school. Um, and it's right there where everyone can see in every corner. Next slide. Here we have all the standalone hand sanitizers there as you enter the buildings, there by the classrooms, there by the elevators. So there, when you walk into the front door, so also teacher classrooms have hand pumps of sanitizer in them. So there's plenty of sanitizer, PPE and everything ready to go. Next slide. This was really unique, each different school, depending on what their logo is, the Whalen Whalers, um, so Paul Revere. Outside, when you're entering the school or exiting, they have markings and they, these unique markings are the six-foot spacing. So they all use their own logo for their six-foot spacing outdoors and entering and exiting the school. It was really cool. Next slide, please. And as far as any isolation rooms, you can see at the high school where the population is very large, um, on the left, they, it almost looks like a um small little field hospital. They were so creative in how they created this room to, if there's up a bit and um a student or a staff member needs to be isolated, they can go in here. Um, and there's a separate exit from this room if they need to exit the building. You can see on the right, this was at the Hill School, little mini cots, more than six feet apart where if a child needs to be attended to or if they're symptomatic, they can lay down and rest, call their parents. So every school has a different room that's designated as an isolation room. Next slide, please. And there is more than enough um amount of PPE in every school that's been provided. Um, here's just a few visuals. Um, there are actually numbers as to how much PPE we have um purchased through the grants before the start of school. So if anyone needs those numbers, those can be supplied. We can see there's youth masks, adult masks, cleaners, alcohol wipes, um, gowns for the isolation room, face masks. So that is all there and ready to go at the schools. Next slide, please. And this was just really great. At every school you can see, and some of the teachers earlier in today's presentation spoke about how they prepare work for the kids. So at every school, at the beginning, there's the art kits at the GMS that the kids will come and pick up. Um, there's homework pickup and drop-off areas. So they're all, there's art supplies for the children. So this is at the front doors of all the schools when you walk in, which was just really great to see like the effort that was put into making sure all the children had what they needed while we were in this town. Um, and I believe that's the end of the slides, Dr. Kelly?
It is.
Okay, so like I said, we walked through all eleven schools in all eight of our buildings and we're just so happy to report like what a great job was done. And this was done over the summer and ready at the start of the school year. So it's there and ready and waiting for when we're ready to return. Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
Thanks. And I'll say, you know, one thing uh that came out of the visits that um you and Mrs. Sneller and uh the other committee members did, Mister Ferrante, I know uh Mrs. Rizzo, um, was that there was some cross-pollination of ideas. Like I know that there was one thing that you talked to Dr. Galucci about, about whether arrows were up on the wall or down on the floor. And it depended on if they were little kids or big kids and uh, you know, in some cases we modified and said, you know, it might be better if you put them on the wall as well, you know, so it was a good learning experience, I think, for everybody.
Yeah, it was. It was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Grabelisi. Do any members have any comments or questions? Uh, oh, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just curious about how the like, the, the big spaces like such as the gymnasium, the auditoriums are being used as far as, as obviously they are open spaces and probably easier to social distance. I'm just curious as how, if they are incorporated into kind of the, the guidelines as far as for the schools.
Yeah, some of the larger spaces, more like the Learning Commons and places like that, might actually be converted into classrooms for larger classes. So our traditional classrooms will, at, at a six-foot distancing, will house about fourteen students um and one staff member at the same time. If it's a classroom that needs to have two staff members, we might need to go down to thirteen students. Um, you know, it really, the square footage is unique to each of the rooms. So if we have a class, as you know, some of our classes at the high school are way too big. Um, there might be like thirty-five or thirty-six kids. And it depends on how many of them have decided that they're going to continue remote learning. Um, we subtract them off and then we know what our cut size is for half and half. And be, especially because the juniors and the seniors are not co-horted, uh, there might not be an exact alphabetical split between who's in week A and who's in week B. Um, so all of those pieces need to come into consideration. And let's just say, for example, there's a class at the high school that on week A, we're going to have eighteen students present, but that room is only big enough for fifteen. Then that class needs to be moved, you know, so those, so those are the kinds of classes that will move into um larger spaces and, and, and every space in every building is part of the equation for that.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
I should say, you won't see like a senior class assembly in the auditorium. That's not going to happen. Uh, but there might be a class that is conducted in the auditorium.
Yeah, that's all I was asking. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Dr. Kelly. Uh, we'll move on to uh old business. Uh, the update on the March first reopening of ELLs, Fed and senior student policies.
Dr. Kelly, I think we've talked about this plenty this evening, so I don't mind taking it off the table.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to uh new business. Any new business from committee members? Seeing none, we'll go uh to school committee interests. Any members have anything they'd like to address? Uh, Mrs. Rizzo?
Um, just that, last week I sent out an email from the Attorney General's Office on, um, they're hosting a a virtual convening on um food insecurities, um, and that is next Wednesday from two to three. Um, if anyone needs more information, let me know. I can get it for you. I know Miss Thai said she was interested in signing up. Um, and maybe she can share some of the information with us after. Um, also, back in November, I spoke about um Dr. Khaleesi Wernham, who I attended a workshop on equity and inclusion, and I was just fascinated with her. If no one had a chance to listen to her then, um, MASC will be doing a Zoom discussion on bias and cultural proficiency with her. And that will be held February twenty-third from six to seven-thirty, and I can also get you the information on that. And lastly, um, last week I had the opportunity of going to the National School Board, will not go in Zoom, um, National School Board Equity Symposium that I, I always enjoy going to. But this year, I have to say, there were two great speakers, um, first one being Brandon Fleming. And he shared his story of being uh an at-risk dropout and to become an, an award-winning Harvard educator. His story itself was absolutely amazing. Um, the words that he um used were I, I, just touched me. I know a lot of districts throughout, not just Massachusetts, but throughout the states are now looking at him to speak at one of their meetings. Um, but if you have a chance, I could probably get the video clip of it so you can enjoy it as much as I did. And then also there was Dr. Jamie Matias. Um, he is on the Mexican School Board. Um, he wrote a book titled Seats at the Table. And it came at, um, came out of all the national events in um the Black Lives Matter protests and everything. And it's a stories of school board members' perspective on how far we've come with respect to the issues of race and racism in our schools. Um, so I did grab one and I did read uh probably more than half of it so far. And I know um there's a couple of colleagues in Maine, in Connecticut and in Massachusetts, and we're going to do a book club on it. If anyone's interested, I can include them in. Um, and also um perhaps grab a book for you, but it was very interesting. And again, I could also probably get you, get the video clip if anyone's interested in it, just let me know. Um, and Dr. Garcia, they gave me so many great ideas. I can't wait, wait to talk to you and how your advisory committee is working and um time to share some of the things. I look forward to that.
Thank you. Look forward to it as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. Uh, any other members? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to motions. Uh, Mister D'Ambrosio, you want to read the motion?
Yes, absolutely. Um, apologize, will I just pull it up? A motion ma- is made by Stacy Rizzo to accept and practice the operating protocols and overarching goals as amended.
Mrs. Rizzo? Uh, Mrs. Rizzo, would you like to speak on it at all or?
No, just that, um, well, thanks to Miss Thai, she kind of updated the grammar and any grammatical errors that were there. And um, we amended it at our committee of the whole meeting earlier. And I think it, it read to all our satisfaction, so.
Great. And motion, uh, is the motion seconded?
I seconded it.
Yeah.
Seconded, okay. Roll call?
Mister Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mister D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mister Ferrante?
Yes.
Miss Grabelisi?
Yes.
Mister Sonella?
Yes.
Miss Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, seeing no further business before the school committee, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second.
Uh, the Revere School Committee is now adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.